Welcome to our second Cambridge Day and CCTV City School Committee Candidate Forum. We are thankful to have all the candidates here in one space today for a very lively conversation, which we hope to focus on values and philosophy. Although policy is important, we look to get to the heart of why the candidate is running and what they're about. And so my name is Nico Emac, longtime journalist and educator alongside Senior Editor of the Cambridge Day, Mark Levy.
Hello.
And we look forward to begin this conversation today. And so for our first question for the group, we'd like to go around in about 30 seconds or less, and David, we'll start with you and zip around this way. Who are you and what do you do?
Hi, well, thank you to Cambridge Day and CCTV and to both of you for moderating this. So I'm David Weinstein. I am a member of the school committee. Outside of my school committee work, I help to run a national civic engagement program that's focused on directly connecting college students with the state legislative process. And really at my heart, I'm a teacher. So even though the work I do at Brandeis isn't as a classroom teacher, I'm working with students, I'm thinking about educational structures, and my work at the school committee is driven by my history as a classroom teacher and then scholar of education and my commitments and concerns, even back to when I was a public school student myself. And I'm a Cambridge resident of 24 years plus, depending on how you count it.
My name is Annie Coburn. I am from Cleveland Heights, Ohio originally, but I've been here since September of 2019. I am a parent of two kids in the Cambridge Public School System. I am a filmmaker, a podcast producer, media maker. I describe myself as a maker of things. And sometimes those things involve children, sometimes those things involve companies. Right now, I'm the Chief Operating Officer of an open source biomedical research device company. It is called Cosmic Inc., Cleveland Open Source Modular Implant Inventors Community. And in my spare time, I like to agitate about various school-related items. Mostly, I really like to make sure that people get their voices heard. I really want to ask questions of anybody, of everybody. And I really want people to have a school system in the school district that work, and I respect the people who do it. This is a hard job, and I think sometimes a thankless one. So take pity on everybody here who is crazy enough to want to do it because we are all dedicated and we all want to do what's right.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lily Hastead. I am a parent in CPS. I have a third grader. I also have a six-month-old baby. And I am a visiting scholar in the Center for African Studies at Harvard, previously a lecturer in history and literature. And so I've been a college classroom educator for over 10 years. That very much informs how I think about what it means to provide a student-centered education that really brings out all of the qualities and assets of our students and all of their diversity. And I think that's core to what I want to bring to the school committee. And I also am running because I've been frustrated by the lack of transparency and meaningful communication and collaboration with all stakeholders in our district. And so I'm running to respond to that weakness in current leadership structures and hopefully to bring some new transparency and rebuild trust in the district.
Hey, my name is Alex Bowers, and I have twin sophomores at CRLS. I am a writer and an editor by trade. I've done a lot of technical writing and editing, and I actually worked for Cambridge Day for about five years as a journalist. So it's very interesting being on the other side of the table. So, you know, having had kids in the system since JK, which is more than 10 years, I've seen, you know, both as a parent and as a reporter, I've seen how the system does not always serve all students equally. And one of the reasons I'm running is to see if I can take my experience, you know, from both sides and improve communications, encourage the administration to look at the data, because one thing I think we don't do very well is examine what has happened and figure out if we can do it better. I think that I've, well, I've served on many, several school councils. I volunteered extensively at my kids' schools. I'm currently on the CRLS School Council, which is very interesting, and I encourage people to listen in because under Principal Gateley-Gahan, they're doing amazing work. And, you know, encouraging families to contribute, encouraging the powers that be to listen and to act on what is best for the community is what I hope to help the school committee do.
Yes, good morning, and thank you for having us. My name is Jose Luis Rojas Villarreal. The question is, who am I? So I am a parent of two students that went, well, one that went through the CPSD. He's just a recent grad from CRLS, and I currently have one student who's a 10th grader at CRLS. They both also went through the bilingual immersion program at a Negro's school. I am originally from Mexico. I've been here in the Cambridge area for 25 years. I've been working in economic development finance all this time, and that's because I grew up on the US-Mexico border and I was always really interested in how things were so different than just crossing a river. And one of those things was access to finance. And access to finance has a big impact on someone's life, I mean, from being able to buy a used car versus having to buy a really bad used car. Not really, I mean, in the US, you can buy nice used cars with the finance. In Mexico, if you want to buy a car, it has to be a new car. You can't get credit for a used car, for example, right? So that has really impacted, and that's just a tiny example, and that extends everything else. So I've been doing access to finance in Latin America and Africa for many years, and the last 25 years I've been doing it here in the US. So that's just my background.
Hi, I'm Carol Wayne Hunter. I'm a retired educator. I've taught more than 40 years, 34 years in the Cambridge Public School System. I originally started as a Chapter One teacher, Title One Teacher it's called now, where I worked at an alternative school called the Group School. Subsequently hired at Cambridge Rendeland, where I served as a teacher in the Leadership School. There, I did all of the things that a teacher does. I was a math teacher, prepare lessons, meet with parents, write curriculum, and supervise my students and provide a rich environment. While I was at CRLS, I also taught a mediation course. I was an advisor to the Black Student Union, the Mass Pep Club, and many other activities. For 10 years, I was a student government advisor, which is a teacher on assignment. So I supervised clubs, the graduation. I was assistant principal for five years, and as assistant principal, you do about everything but do the windows. So you supervise the teachers, the custodians, the students, prepare for the graduation, schedule the courses, which is a round robin, where the teachers come and submit course offerings, as well as produce the course catalog. So I know the workings of the school district as a teacher and as an administrator. As a parent, my child went through the Cambridge School pre-K through 12. She had the pleasure of being at the daycare at the high school, which is a wonderful phenomena that we still offer. And she's a successful adult based on her start at the Cambridge Public Schools. I'm the second teacher administrator to serve on the Cambridge School Committee. And so I think I bring an insight that a lot of people don't have as a person intimate to that. I'm currently the vice chair and actually the budget co-chair for two years with Member Rojas to my right. So I've had the experience not only as a parent, a teacher, and administrator, but extensive experience as the vice chair. The vice chair attends more meetings than anybody else because we meet school committee the two times a week, and then the vice chair, the mayor, and the superintendent meet every meeting before each agenda meeting. So I bring to the district a wealth of experience, a passion for teaching, and a passion for the work. As vice chair, I served on three successful contract negotiations. So I'm here to run a game, to improve the school system. My priorities this year are around third grade reading and to make sure that all of our children who are below grade level get the strategic tutoring support that they need and accountability for everyone in the district. Thank you. Thank you, Cambridge Day, for having us.
Hi, my name is Jessica. I am a parent to two upper school students here in the Cambridge School System, and they've been here since JK. I've lived in Cambridge for about 14 years. I have been, as Alex said, also an excessive volunteer in my kids' schools, and that has given me a lot of insight into how specific schools work and also the differences across schools. And part of that is why I have focused my campaign on issues of process and how we do things. I have often had a hard time understanding the workings of the school committee and, frankly, the district. And I always think that I'm a native English speaker who feels empowered to go and get my questions answered, and I wonder if we can do better across the district to make sure that we are truly reaching everybody by standardizing how we do things and having more transparent and responsive processes.
Hi, I'm Arjun J. Kumar. I'm an attorney, a public servant, I work for the Commonwealth, and a dad of a CPS fourth grader. I'm also an active volunteer and school council member at my kid's school. I am the child of immigrants. I, and I was born and raised in Massachusetts. I grew up in Newton. My family's been in Cambridge since 2002, and I've been here on and off and consistently since 2014. The North Star of my life and my career is public service and justice, economic and social justice. And these are the things that made me go to law school, they've guided my practice, they got, you know, and they're why I want to serve today. I think I have fought for many years as an attorney for a more just and equitable society, and those are the principles that I think I've made of public service as a candidate for the school committee. I am running because I want to see our entire city engaged in the process of governing and in the process of policymaking. I think we need to be, do a far better job of engaging families, and I think we need to do a far better job of engaging workers and educators. And those principles of equity and social and economic justice are what brings me here today. But thank you for having me.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Duvie. I'm a lifelong educator. I'm also a parent in the district to a fifth grader. I have served as a classroom teacher, an administrator, an instructional coach. I've taught at the middle school, high school, and elementary school and college levels. And I'm currently a consultant doing school design work, creating project-based learning schools, democratically designed schools, and I also do a lot of work here in the district. So some of the work I do here is around youth leadership. I've started two no-cost youth leadership programs in Cambridge, and I've also worked at the high school on developing CRLS consent athletic workshops. I think we were, you were on a panel at one of those. And we're also developing workshops for Unified Athletics, so thinking about inclusion across the district as well. I'm also engaged as a community member. I've served on the Commission for the Status of Women and Girls for the past three years, and I was the parent co-chair at the Baldwin School Council for two years, and I'm now currently a member there. So the work I do is really thinking about how education is a platform and our most important lever for increasing civic engagement, having a healthy democracy, allowing students to take the lead in terms of thinking about what social justice means, what activism and advocacy means here in our city, and also the types of learning experiences that children are getting in our classrooms and the ways that we're building community here in the city to model the sort of future that we hope to see for the future. So I'm excited to be here and talk about those things and bring that experience and commitment to school making.
Hello, my name is Ja Jing Lee, and I was born and grew up in Malaysia for the first 17 years. I came here in 2009, that's 16 years ago, after graduating from Carleblin Institute for Cancer Research. And I came here for a postdoctoral training at Harvard Medical School and lived here in Cambridge, where I call home, and started my family. Most importantly, I'm a mother of two children. One is a neurodivergent and one is a quick learner. And this resembles what's happening in the Cambridge Public School, diverse learners. And at some point, navigating the IEP for my oldest son, it's extreme, was extremely challenging. So I had to homeschool him and also his sister later on due to COVID for a number of years. And now they are back in school, doing very well because of dedicated teachers and also flexible system. That brings the second part of the story. We were part of the Kennedy Longfellow community, and that community alongside with other school communities were underserved, and they are still underserved even after closing the Kennedy Longfellow community. And throughout that process, I was actively advocating for the families, mostly who are non-native speakers and who have no leisure or knowledge in advocating for their own child. So involving that process, I gained firsthand experience of how the systemic issues in the district could be significantly improved, especially my exposure to the various kinds of education systems around the world. I've lived in five countries and four continents. So, and I'm a medical scientist by training. I look at causes, root causes, not just symptoms. And the third part of the story, which is related to all these, is we are looking at the same problem, the inequity issue, for many, many years, yet we have not been able to come with a solution. But with a global new perspective that I'm able to bring into the table, which is we should not be doing one-size-fits-all approach. And now I'm running a nonprofit. I set it up and I work partnership with many people around the world and also locally and with the emphasis of mental wellbeing, understanding that joyful learning is the key for motivating our kids to learn and drive their curiosity, critical thinking, and wanting to learn and come to school every day to have that sense of belonging. And that's the, and which is why we need to have a holistic approach of education. And because of my work with nonprofits, I enjoy the, I want to bring in the partnership value and implementation in our district where we collaborate with community members, all stakeholders, and even city councilors. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Luisa de Paula Santos. I have worked as a paraprofessional in our district at the Fletcher Maynard Academy, which is now the highest needs school in our district following the closure of Kelo. I was working with neurodivergent students there, and in that experience, I saw the incredible potential of our students and of our educators, and also faced firsthand the systemic failures in our district. As some candidates have already said, I feel that there needs to be more engagement of communities that don't have the capacity or the access to be able to do so. Navigating IEPs, navigating the school choice system is very complicated, and I feel that going to communities to get that input is critical. I have a background in urban policy, a graduate degree in urban policy and planning, and a focus on participatory governance and participatory decision-making processes. I did research in Dorchester where I worked with nonprofits in order to advocate for community control of development in city planning processes. So I have a lot of experience engaging a variety of stakeholders to be able to do collaborative policymaking. And aside from that, I am still a paraprofessional in the public schools, and I'm an active MTA member. So I bring that perspective of being a union organizer and educator who's a union member to this work as well.
Hi, I'm Eugenia Schraha, and I say my name very simply, just Eugenia like Eugene, and Schra, people make it much more complicated. And Schraha was, my slogan last year was, rhymes with algebra, and this year, or this cycle, rather, it still does apply, so let's keep that. I'm a former public high school teacher, and I taught in the Bronx. And I also have two kids in the Cambridge Public Schools at Baldwin. One is at Salk right now, and one is in the control room, so hopefully this recording is going to go very smoothly. She's in first grade. Another thing that distinguishes me in this race is that I have an advocacy track record. In particular, I worked a lot on after-school. And one example of what I brought to that work and how that happened was, we had a little success when we were told by the head of DHSP that the issue wasn't space and wasn't money, but was the difficulty in hiring. So me and two other parents did some work, and we researched what is the salary here in Cambridge, and then we sometimes made a phone call, or sometimes it was just public, and found out the salaries of other after-school teachers in Somerville and other surrounding cities, and were able to make a little table showing that Cambridge was underpaying. And so then we had slowly, over time, built a list of parents, and we were able to show them this list and ask them to speak to city leaders. And shortly thereafter, after-school pay didn't go up, and a little bit after that, the after-schools added 170 seats. So that's just an example of sort of the unsexy, very boring work that goes into making small steps on the advocacy front. And today, I'm still doing that kind of similar work, talking directly to parents and constituents. I have a weekly newsletter that I am using to bring attention to issues that I care about at the schools, and local news has taken up two of those stories. One was on the superintendent search, and one is on troubling data that's coming out of Fletcher Maynard School. Thank you.
So, pardon me. Before I pass the microphone to my colleague for the first question, I just want to take a brief 30 seconds to kind of remind the group of our format and our structure. And so due to the high volume of candidates in the room, we were able to break our city council forum into two parts. For the school committee, it's one large group. And so, you know, out of respect and fairness, we will be doing our best to moderate the conversation and, you know, chiming in if your answers start to run on. And so we do appreciate the thoughtfulness of your answer, but we will be doing our best to facilitate an organized and fair conversation. We also want this not to be a question and answer, but a conversation between candidates. And so the success of our city council forum and our school committee forum from two years ago was that it was a direct conversation between each other and not a Q and A from us. And so while we will facilitate, we do encourage you to respond directly to each other, to build off each other, and we look forward to those answers. And again, just as a final reminder, while policy is important, I'll gladly sit down with you, and we can go discuss policy for another two hours after the forum. We really are interested in understanding who you are as people. And while the other forums, as great as they are, really do focus on policy and kind of, you know, do a roundtable of stump speeches, for lack of a better phrase, we want to break out of that. We're curious to know, right, who you are, what your intentions are, your philosophy, your temperament. And so if we do feel that the conversation is getting too policy-heavy, we will respectfully, all right, steer it back that way. And so with that being said, I'll pass it over to Mark for our first question.
Unfortunately, we got that stuff out of the way early.
Yes.
I was trying to craft a joke on the fly about like, what the, you know, what a few weeks or months of campaigning does to one sense of time. So Nico and I were talking, and we wanted to make the first question about a little bit of maybe perception versus reality, where we share the feeling that school committee is unique from the city council, because you get the sense that, you know, people run for city council because they kind of want to be in public office. They want to sort of be on city council and do policy in some sort of abstract way. Whereas school committee, frequently, we feel that the candidacies are fueled by an incandescent rage about what is...
That's accurate, I think.
Always like, what, it's always a response to what's going on with the school committee or the district at that moment. And so I just sort of wanted to front out, if anyone wanted to engage on the idea, like, is this accurate? Like, do people sort of get into school committee?
I think some people, I think some people do. And I mean, you just heard that a moment ago. I won't speak for others and say, who here, you know, is responding that way. For me, it's not, it's not rage. I would say it's love and care that's driving me and drove me to do this. I've been, I first ran 10 years ago. You know, our situation is different now, but I still feel really driven. I do think we've had successes, but we're not where we should be. You know, and I really think that everybody in our community is really, we have a benefit. We're all really rowing in the same direction for the most part. Some are championing particular pieces of it. We're all really trying, and we're all interdependent. And so for me, it's just that feeling of where can I contribute in a way that I think maybe I have some, something to offer that works there where other people who maybe know more or, you know, have more expertise or more experience in some area might not be able to be as effective in that format. I was on the steering committee at my kids' elementary school. I do have an eighth grader and a 2025, class of 2025 graduate. But, you know, I don't think everybody honestly is, not everybody's running for school committee. It seems that way with like 18 people, but not everybody is running. And then I think that that's not because other people care less, it's that that's not how they're going to make their contribution. And for me, it's where I feel like I can, and hopefully I've been able to.
Yeah, yes and.
Yes, you can yes and this.
I'm going to yes and you, because I think it's both yes and, Mark, and yes and you. I think everybody's got the fuel that is, that they are bringing to it. And I think that we all hope that we are finding a collegial group of people, like a team of rivals, to use a, you know, history book, to be able to move things forward for the kids. I am very serious when I think, when I say that I think that everybody in this room wants what is best for this population of kids, you know? That's powerful. The problem I think that we all are trying to grapple with in our own ways is how to turn that good meaning, that well-intentioned energy, that passion, into actually effective policy. So, you know, maybe rage is part of it, but that rage is because of an identification of a loss or a lack and a desire to do better.
Let's not make sure my joke like sort of cements into rage. Carol.
Yeah, I didn't come through rage. I actually had a lovely retirement career. And I had retired back and forth between Martha's Vineyard, where I had the luxury of spending warmest weather to coldest weather on the Vineyard. And I don't know if it was, it might have been post-COVID where some members of the black community called and said, there are two open seats on the school committee, you should run. And I had always thought about it as a retired educator, but retirement was very, very attractive. So in addition, sometime during that, I was counseling some members of the school committee around some structures that were going on. So I submitted my papers, ran a very short campaign, and lost by 106 ranked votes. And I said, did my civic duty, I tried, the voters said no. And I went back under my rock to retirement. And lo and behold, a member resigned after not by 11 months. So I was shopping at Home Depot, and my daughter made an exclamation. I said, did somebody die? And she said, no, you're the next person on the school committee. I'm like, and then my phone started blowing up. We congratulated, and I said, wait, wait, hold on. I had to process that. But I ran the one-month campaign, it's not successful. So I actually got inaugurated on a Tuesday, and by Friday, I was in Orlando for a school board conference because one of our members got sick, had COVID, and couldn't go in the retirement transfer room. So it was a quick onboarding experience, but I brought to it the same love that I had in the 34 years that I worked at Cambridge Rendeland and the 40 years I've done this education. I grew up under segregation in Orleans, and I know about the power of education and what it does to change lives. And so I am passionate about the work. And as an educator, I know students can be moved from below grade level to above grade level. That was my work. I did college algebra, I did the mediation course, I created certain kind of structures. But I also did MCAT prep, I also did SAT. The district trained me in Princeton Review. For those people who say, don't teach to the test, at Princeton Review, you are trained to teach the child to the test. MCAT, LSAT, you're teaching to the test. So the fault is not the test, the fault is the foundational, when we talk about MCAT, the fault is not giving the children a foundational structure to be able to pass the test. And so I taught SAT prep within the Cambridge Public School System, where children rotated between me, a math educator, and a language arts educator, two to three times a week in a flexible schedule, to help them boost their scores and improve their access to college and beyond.
Thank you, sorry. We have to move on, we have to move on. Please, chime in.
Yeah, I believe that, yeah, I definitely feel motivation to run because of the experience that I had as an educator in our schools. You could call it rage, but it's like a fuel that motivates me. Because I did see students, you know, whose needs were not being met, extremely dysregulated. I think in some cases, even possibly re-traumatized by some of the lack of structures in our schools to serve them. And that really upset me because it's students who need extra support to be able to meet their grade-level achievements, and you can't really be learning if you're dysregulated. And you can't really be learning if you're dysregulated, if you're in a really emotionally stressful situation. And I was in classrooms where we had to evacuate the classroom every single day because of highly elevated escalated behaviors. And I saw students who are on the autism spectrum unfortunately like regress in some of their skills because you can't really develop skills under those conditions. And I feel like if educators had more support, um, if 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 we were able to examine these issues uh more closely and really understand what is causing them, I feel like these students would be better served. And these are critical years in a child's development that they will not be able to get back. And I really believe that we need to act as soon as we can to address these issues.
Please, just.
I was gonna say like, you know, just quickly, like I worked in politics when I was first out of college. I've been in or adjacent to the game for a long time, first time candidate. I think there are two kinds of people who run for office. And I think this goes to your point, your question mark, and I think is actually a very well-taken point. There are people who run for office because they want to be somebody and there are people who run for office because they want to do something.
Yeah.
And I think that broadly for the school committee, and I think of everybody in this room, we're all here because we wanted to do something, because we thought, because we care, which manifests as passion, which itself manifests sometimes as love and sometimes as rage, you know, depending on the circumstances, but.
I feel that way with my kids sometimes.
Yeah, exactly. Because we're passionate about raising our own children and we're passionate about the education they get. And so it, I think it's totally true. But I think that, you know, cer- certainly what drove me to run was I looked around and I just watched the school committee work and I was watching how the district functioned and I thought, you know, could I add value? Could I bring something to the table that I think would help this body, that I think would benefit it? And I think that's for the first time I ever looked at public service and I was like, yeah, I could do that. And I'm guessing that that's what drove most of us to run because we thought in our own way, we could help.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, for me, I would say like it's a sense of frustration. You know, having watched meetings for the longest time and and made lists and emailed the poor people on the website. Every time I can't find something, why can't I find this on your website? And um ultimately it was a decision of like, I have a little group of friends and we watch the school committee meetings and we drink our wine and we say, what's happening here? And no one understands.
My idea.
And I, I have the privilege of time to put into it now. And so I felt like I was doing a lot of complaining and feeling very frustrated. And so you can keep complaining or you can put yourself out there and see what you can do. And if all the little lists I've kept along the years about the ways in which we could be working um in a more accountable and accessible and transparent way, if those have value to the community, that's what I want to share. You know, I am in a rare position, I think, for a lot of people in that I have um absolute control over my work schedule. I only work past part-time and um it gives me a lot of time and energy. And I've had a lot of parenting experience within the system. Um, and so for me, it was a sense of frustration and that kind of idea, like my dad always used to say with like, if you're going to complain, bring a solution. Um, and so for me, running is kind of a solution.
So I, I really appreciate what everyone is is saying and I I I particularly appreciate folks highlighting that we understand, even though we're all in competition here on on a fundamental level, um, um, the acknowledgement that we're all deeply motivated by our care for um doing right by our our kids in our education system. Um, I want to go back to the idea of rage and 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 name that rage is a normal human emotion. Um, and um, uh, it's an emotion that we are trying to help our kids deal with. Not, and we're not doing a very good job of it in our schools right now. And that's part of what I started to get concerned about in my first year as a parent in CPS a few years ago when my kid entered kindergarten, uh, about, I I don't know how long into the school year, um, but not long, matter of weeks. Um, after first hearing from the school leadership that we would be eliminating rest time for our JK, uh, our junior kindergarten and kindergarten students, uh, so our four to six-year-olds in our JKK classrooms. We're no longer going to have time to rest during their six-hour school day. And I remember being concerned by this decision, knowing my son and how active, hyperactive he is and 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 how important rest is for him to get through the day um as a, you know, whole self. Um, and um, then not long after that announcement, we started uh hearing from our son that his class was being evacuated. We didn't hear this from administrators, um, we didn't hear it from teachers, heard it directly from this my son. And he was saying things like, yeah, we had to evacuate the classroom because it wasn't safe. And I'm all of a sudden wondering what is, what is going on here? And I started to try to get answers. I started by reaching out to teachers. I uh reached out to um school leadership. Uh, our teacher at the time was brand new and she seemed a bit timid in in trying to respond to parent concerns. Leadership, school leadership uh didn't want to answer the questions. And I started to look elsewhere and I started turning to school committee and I didn't get any responses from school committee. And this went on for months. It actually went on for the whole school year. I don't even know how many times our our kids evacuated the classroom or why. I don't know how many times my son was actually directly involved in in physical altercations. It was at least once. Um, and uh, and I was among parents who who were really frustrated by the lack of care from school leadership and district leadership in responding to what was going on. I was very concerned that the lack of response was also going to further stigmatize the kids who were becoming dysregulated in the classroom. And I tried to make that point to leadership on several occasions and it fell on deaf ears every time. And lo and behold, that's exactly what happened. There were parents in the school who felt like the problem just needed to be removed.
Exactly.
And I think that that is such a poor reflection on district leadership. And um speaking about this now, yeah, I guess I feel a little rage about it. And I think that that's okay.
Yeah, I'm definitely on the rage side too. And I've heard a lot about that. I will say my kids at Baldwin have been so lucky. One of the kids was really behind in a certain subject matter and got all the support he needed. So it is not about, yeah, I would love to see more Baldwins, I guess, um, particularly the principal's leadership there and the support she gives to her teachers. But I, I'll just remember when I, when I left uh my school, I taught at the Fordham Leadership Academy for Business and Technology. That was the name. And I remember some kids saying to me, I had kids who were in twelfth grade about to graduate and very worried about what they were going to find on the other side of that because they didn't feel that they had been prepared. And they said, you know, this name is so fancy. Uh, we thought we were going to get this great education. I just remember the feeling of like, ugh, that I felt because they truly had not had the education that they deserved in our school. It was not a good enough school for them.
When you did.
And uh, yeah, and so that is very motivating to me is that feeling of those kids were failed. Of course, Cambridge wouldn't do the same for kids here in Cambridge. And then when you discover that, yes, and those two examples from Lisa and from Lily are very powerful. Um, another example, I've sort of, one of my concerns is that this CPS says they don't do any tracking and that this is for equity sake. But I think that results in a lot of lumping kids together where some kids are going to be set up to fail and some kids are just bored and dysregulated maybe. And there's also a bunch of secret tracking. And so I was mentioning this on the doors just earlier this week and this mom was there with her son who was a a senior. And she just said right in front of him, it was so awkward, but she was, had tears in her eyes. She said, yes, there was all these classes I should have put him into, but I didn't. Now he's not going to college, he's not on a college track. And that, I know she didn't use the word blighted, but she said something like, his future is blighted, um, in her own words. And that's what I was talking about and that's what's actually happening. And um, yeah, that fills me with with rage. Of course, I'm a very calm person. You heard about the boring work that I did, you know, looking at uh uh um reports and crunching the numbers and trying to grow an email list. And I do think that there's lots of very boring, simple, but very data-backed things that we can be doing. Uh, there's a huge economic study by Raj Chetty, who studies economic mobility. And he says that a lot of um, what makes a powerful school is great teachers. So there's a lot of simple solutions. They're very simple and they just require a lot of steady, steady work on them. And they can make a difference in the lives of the kids who need, all the kids, but all the kids who need it most.
Thank you. I'd just like to open the floor to anyone who hasn't spoke yet. Um, we could just go to Jose and then we'll jump to you.
Yeah, thank you and thank you, Eddie, for for sharing your your point.
Jose, Anne and Caitlin.
Anne, I have it.
No, I I've spoken, but it was more general and I'd like to share a specific.
We'll get you, we'll get you back in.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I guess I I want to share that, I mean, I I've had experience working in different governance settings for many years. I've been working in the corporative sector, first Latin America and Africa and now in the US. And co-ops are 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 strange organizations. I mean, basically the the members with the, they're the farmers or they're the employees of the company, sit on the board. They name, they 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 choose their their executive director, which in turn becomes their boss, right? So there is this built-in tension in how those boards work. And and that's probably maybe an extreme, right? But basically all boards have an internal, internal dynamics that that create tension. And the question is, what what does that tension lead to? And I think for most boards, that tension leads to nothing, basically nothing happens. I think most boards are not very efficient. There are, there are, there are a chunk of boards that are actually very dysfunctional and they actually cause a lot of harm to the organization. And there are very few boards that actually have the people that have the the self-awareness of what the board's role really is and they are constructive. So I really hope and and I trust that people that want to serve in the school committee, the school committee is a board uh of parents, which in a way, I mean, we are sort of naming the the principals, I mean, the the superintendent, which in turn turns, is sort of taking care of our our children. So there's there's circularity. But really, if we're there just with rage, rage is not enough. We need to be constructive. And so that's sort of where where I would like to take the the conversation, how can we be constructive?
Yeah, I think as I sit here listening to all of the very real examples of um distrust and harm and lack of accountability, I also am holding all of the amazing things that are happening in our schools, the amazing teachers that we have, the wonderful possibilities that we have. And I think for me, thinking about being on school committee and what's driving me to be in this race is the power of that possibility. And that's the same kind of teaching and learning that we want to do with young people when we talk about the culture that they're living in, that they've inherited. And that culture is something that is um trans- transform, transformational. And the way that that happens is when people engage with it and shift it. And so I think it's really powerful to have a group of people like this in this city coming together to be a part of a school committee that is directly impacting young people's ability to shift and change culture. And that is really exciting for me and that is part of what's driving me to be in this race, to think about, all of us ended up here engaged in our communities. How are we raising young people in Cambridge and beyond to also do that? And what skills and competencies and experiences do they need to have in order to do that? And yes, that means really caring for our most underserved kids. And it also means thinking about the big system-wide picture. And I think that's the really exciting place to be. So I feel in the same way, I think that a lot of teachers feel called to that work. I feel called to be in this race and I'm excited to be here with other people who have um that passion and motivation as well.
Yeah, so frustration definitely was the initial prime. But apart from being frustrated, I was looking at how I can make a change. If I can support someone who genuinely cared, I would go all the way and do that and without coming to the forefront. Because coming to the forefront, it's not my personality. I would really much prefer to stay behind the scene and, trust me, every day I wake up and I ask my husband and other friends, what am I doing this? But as I say, and I've talked to Luisa previously, because I want to really make sure someone really genuinely cares about all kids, not just a certain population, but all kids, whether you are struggling or you are doing well, but feel you need more challenge or emotionally or socially, you, we need to support all kids. And to do that, we need to look at the whole picture. And everyone comes with a good intention. I, that's no question. But how we are going to work, because someone is for population A, someone is for population B, how are you going to do that? And this is something, I look at myself, I'm able to do that because, as I say, I practice partnership. And I play different role as, not just as a mother, but also as someone in administrative office and at homeschool, kind of like an educator. And also I'm a lifelong learner. So I look at all these perspectives and understand every perspect- perspective matters. And we can work in a common goal together. And this is a strength that I can bring in. So this is the reason I'm willing to run, I'm I'm willing to risk my comfort zone and come up to run.
I have a bit of a follow-up to that.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure that we are talking with people who we haven't before. And I know that Anne said she had a very quick thing to possibly finish up on.
Just a a quick comment. Um, I think for me, uh, the word is more disillusionment. I'm boundless with hope. Um, you know, just having seen my kids go from JK up to sophomore year in high school, but also seeing their their cohort, their friends um on the same path. And one of the things that really aggravates me is that there are, who said secret? Someone, Eugenia.
Yeah.
Said that there are, there is like two tiers of information that people get. And one is you can open up the catalog and you can read it. Okay, you must take Algebra One, it's been a pretty hot issue. You don't have to take Algebra One if you know how to manage the system. And if a newcomer comes in and they read the paper like, oh, my kid already took it, but it looks like I have no choice.
Yeah.
And that's just one very small example of the inequities that are built into this whole system. And, you know, hearing, for instance, there was a um, a child who entered a computer science introductory introductory course at the high school. There are two courses with a similar name. If you take one, you're on the math path. You take another one, you're sort of on the, you know, you can go into cybersecurity and more programming. If you take the wrong one, you can't, you're not able to take, i- i- if you screw up the path, you have to take the other one. And it's just the lack of information, a sort of a two-tier information system and how it affects kids from the very beginning in terms of the IEP or five oh four services you get to the enrichment programs you can enroll in, to the quality of the upper schools, which my children went to both CCSC and PAWS. And I, my understanding is within the district, there are different expectations set for different sets of students at the upper schools. And then when you get into the high school, everything is topsy-turvy because you haven't, students haven't been given an an equitable um pathway to start at a level that is most appropriate for them. Because not everyone's going to want to take Algebra One. I could have dropped math in sixth grade and that would have been happening. But you know, if you're, if you're an English kid or a theater kid or math, to be able to give the students what they need so that they can go on and pursue their passions, I just don't think it's a, the level playing field is a terrible um metaphor, simile. But um, that's, that's where I'm getting. So that's what I'm saying.
Anne, did you have a button on this or can we read?
I had a button up, but my button is specific. Uh, it's specific to my daughter and so it's both rage and love. And um, my daughter has dyslexia. We were in New York City, we uh went through an IEP process, we uh had experienced that, you know, she was in first, no, she was in kindergarten and she was saying that she was a bad person because she didn't know how to read. And we had the information that our IEP was not appropriate because my older sister is a principal of the kid, of a school for kids with learning differences. We knew that we had a really short period of time because, you know, kids learn to read between like around up to third grade, right? We had a very short period of time in order to make a very real change. And it was one of the reasons why we moved here. And we got here and there was the exact right person that needed, that she needed to teach her how to read at Kennedy Longfellow. And so, you know, we're going along, we're having our sort of weird life. And um, we keep, I think it was Eugenia, actually, who said, oh, I'm so sorry. Or or something like the perception of Kennedy Longfellow within the district was one of lack, of one of being wrong, bad, oh no, your kids aren't going to get what they need. Sometimes that was true, far more rats than were appropriate for any school building, right? Sometimes it was exactly what you needed. It was the love. It was what the teachers provided, the the sense of warmth that so many kids came into this.
It was what the teachers provided, the sense of warmth, that so many kids came into this district needing, like refugees from Ukraine, Haitian immigrants, people who hadn't had a chance to enroll in the, in the lottery, in which kids go into public school, like at kindergarten, where like you choose what school or your parents choose what school they want you to go to, right? That wasn't our community. Our community was a people who didn't know anything about a lottery. And our school was special to us, and it was special to those kids. And yeah, it failed kids too, because no, they weren't really worried about a test score. Maybe they should've been, they were really worried about loving the kids.
There's a question I know Nico was eager to ask, but I wanted to sort of throw a follow-up out there. Between the frustration and getting on school committee, there must be some interim step? Has anyone in their, all their experience as an educator, as a journalist, as a different kind of educator, as an attorney, has anyone come across a structure that could be sort of imposed on a more traditional school committee that might actually get communities heard to the extent that maybe they don't have to take the step of running? Does anyone come across?
Oh, meaning like examples of.
Clarify that question, sorry, it's a little bit confusing to me.
Innovative ideas that can be overlaid atop a school committee structure that might get people heard more.
I think we need to change the structure completely.
Yes.
Burn it down.
No, the, the way the school committee, with all due respect to the members here who I know deeply care about the kids in our community and their success. But the way you all are running our school committee right now is deeply inaccessible and you are hearing that over and over and over. If it's inaccessible to this group, imagine how inaccessible it is to the rest of the community, right? I, you know, we need to figure out how to make the school committee at least accessible to those who really, really want to pay attention, who have the time and, and resources to dedicate to this.
Or easy enough for people who don't have a ton of time, right?
Well, and easy enough for people who don't have enough of time but want to be informed, right?
One of the ways that I think is really exciting that we've, oh yeah, sorry, oh yeah.
I'm sorry, that, that's, I'm ready, just finished what I was saying, yeah. So, so I lost my train of thought, that's, that's postpartum brain, I, I was, when you interrupt me, I was.
It never stops, it never stops.
No, but my, my, my point being that, that I think there's a lot that we can change. We don't have to go by the current rules of the school committee, we can rewrite them completely, and that's what I wanna do. And I think there are several people in this room that want to rewrite the rules completely. So that we are taking meetings to community members, so that we are hosting regular listening sessions. Next month, I'm starting an initiative on my own with my student-led team to host living room conversations, which are, which is an organization that is dedicated to fostering productive dialogue for understanding. I think something that the school committee can be doing so much more of, it's not happening, I don't think at all right now, is, is creating space for different parts of the district to come together, different communities within the district. Because we are not one community, we are many, many communities. And sometimes we are pitted against each other, and I think that that's particularly problematic. And so I think we need to create as a school committee, space for different parts of the communities that we are a part of to come together and listen to each other and understand. And so that's what I'm gonna be doing, starting next month, small facilitated discussion groups. Students, educators, family members, community partners. I wanna hear and create space for all of our stakeholders to come together and share their experiences, their lived experiences with the education system. So that we can start to understand each other better. And I think that's critical to changing how our school committee works, so that we can actually build on the understanding that we create. Because if we're gonna disagree, we're going to constantly disagree. There's no way around that. But how do you move from disagreement to collective action? Well, you have to start by understanding each other. And we, we right now don't have any space in this district, under the current school committee, to come together and understand each other.
David?
Well, I'm sorry, it delayed for interrupting.
That's okay.
My attention, I got too far with the kind of, we're having the dialogue piece, but I apologize. And I do, I sympathize with the sort of feeling, once, like I was saying, once you've got kids in the house, keeping one train of thought.
Yeah.
It's actually good preparation for some of this work. But, you know, one of the things that we've, that I've really worked, worked on in a focused way, particularly over the past term, is our, our school councils. There's, that's one of the sites, it is another, you know, formal structure, but it's one of the sites.
You know that I'm on school council, right?
Yes.
And it's not worth, so, so am I.
Yeah, and I, and actually, yes, yes.
Many such cases.
But it's also interesting to see how many people here, and I know Jose Luis had served on school council, I served on a school council. You know, that was a step where I thought, this is really, you know, powerful and I think I have something I can offer in this other format, but I also think the school council work is so critical. And, you know, in some cases, it's been really working incredibly well at some schools over time, and in some cases, really need support. So we had a really wonderful working group that developed a handbook, a set of policies that I insisted we actually approve, review and approve as policy. But I've also, you know, established our ad hoc subcommittee this past year to try to really build on that support in practice. And we still have, you know, we have further to go. I mean, personally, part of how I try to approach this, and I think it's a line that really, that's really exciting initiative, Lily, you're talking about with those conversations. I mean, there are various of these conversations that happen, and I think we can do more to make sure that what's happening in those spaces is really informing the, the thinking and dialogue in the school committee space. You know, my personal approach, even though I wouldn't successfully do it right now, is to show up and shut up a lot of the time and to really not make assumptions. I mean, I certainly go into spaces with some ideas, with some thoughts, with hypotheses about what we need and what's going forward. But often in this work, even at the height of COVID, we were making well-intentioned assumptions at times about what various folks in our community needed and wanted. And when we really, which I think we did a good job of in that case mostly, when we really listened, we sometimes found out that that wasn't always the case. And the people who were strenuously advocating for something for somebody, weren't actually advocating for what they themselves felt that they needed. So I think we need to do a lot to make sure that we're aligning what our intentions with our impacts, you know, more consistently.
One of the structures that we tried to impact was the charter review. Member Rachel was the vice chair at the time. And one of our conferences, we met someone who had changed their school committee structure from a two-year structure to a four-year rotating structure. So one of the warnings for people with difficulty in doing the job is that you're deep into the work and it's time to run. And so, it's, it's very, very difficult to do. And so we wrote what we thought was a compelling letter to the charter review committee to say, let's at least talk, introduce the idea of expanding the term to four years, rotating them, and the first year it's a lottery, you just pick who's gonna run. But it gives some chance to make the kind of transition, because just as you think you're into the work, you have to run again. Unfortunately, the charter committee didn't even dignify our request with a response. And even went further to say that the recommendation that's gonna be on the ballot for people to vote is that the mayor should not necessarily serve on the school committee, it's gonna be optional. I talked to the council and I, I said to them not so nice a negative statement about what I thought their behavior was, that it was not very right to change the operational structure of another organizational electoral body without even talking to us. And so at the time, they said, well, we recommended for the mayor not to be on the council, but what are we gonna do if the mayor refuses and still getting paid? Okay? So, I don't think people understand that having, regardless of who the mayor is, having the mayor and the vice chair, co-chair of the school committee gives you the benefit of city resources and other things. And certainly having the mayor, the vice chair and superintendent meet, you can solve some problems before they even hit the table. So that's one of the ballot questions that will come up for people to, when you look at charter review, to realize that the council has changed the functioning of the school committee without even talking to the school committee. So we thought it was very thoughtful to try to see if we could make that change, but there was no negotiation for that, it'll be on your ballot.
I saw Caitlin and then Alex.
Yeah, so I think, I wanna add on to what Lily was saying, because I think, speaking as one of the people who really is also interested in rethinking and reorganizing the way that school committee operates as a body and the ability that school committee has to shift the rules, to democratize both meetings and processes. That's very exciting to me. I also think it is exceptionally difficult to create policy and see it through with a two-year term. And so I think there are extra electoral solutions to that, like having a board of past school committee members, community members, educators in the community who hold that institutional wisdom and serve as a non-voting member, for example, on school committee. I'd also like to say, as someone who's been on the Baldwin School Council for three years, when I first got on the council as parent co-chair, I reached out across the district to say, hey, are we talking to each other as school councils, is, could someone give me a list of other parent co-chairs? And I tried unsuccessfully for a full year to get that information from the district, had to sort of ad hoc it myself. And, and I think that that is indicative of either too much going on or a lack of real interest in having parent and family input in the community. And if we're not doing that, we're kind of cutting off at the legs our most accessible form of democracy, which is our public school system. So, school councils are exceptionally important and need to be at the table at school committee meetings in a real way. And school councils are also the only place where people in the community who can't vote have a say in what happens in our schools. Because there are so many parents in the district who are disenfranchised from this election. And it's a place where they can serve in school leadership, have a, have a voice and really impact what's going on at a policy level. So if we're not really actually inviting school councils to the table at school committee, we're cutting off a beautiful source of like sharing of best practices.
Yes.
And we're also eliminating so many parent voices from the conversation.
And educators.
I do, I know Mark did cue you up, but I just, again, out of fairness, wanna get other voices involved. I did see a hand here, but again, we're not here to, yeah, that's totally fine. And I also encourage you, right, instead of raising the hand, right, just respectfully work your way into the conversation. Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
We all have small, we've got small children, so we're like, call me.
A room full of educators, but please.
I wanna pick up on what everyone has been saying about the school councils and your point about it being a way for people who can't vote for various reasons, you know, they're visiting, they're undocumented, whatever, to get their voices, it's a really good point. I was on, Robin Harris, who had been principal of FMA and has filled several roles in the, in the community over the years, school community over the years, was tasked with revising the school council handbook, I think about three years ago. And I was on the working group that helped with that. And one of the things that struck me is that it was, she, she ran the whole development of this book beautifully, I, you know, she's just a fantastic administrator.
Yeah.
And we created a document that everyone thought was very solid, you know, it was a diverse group of people that contributed. But one of the things that frustrated me is when we handed it over to the administration, they took their red pen and they slashed at it. And they, they diluted the emphasis on family and caregiver contributions to the school councils. And so, sometimes it was subtle, sometimes it wasn't subtle, but it basically took back power to the administration.
Yeah.
And it's, it's.
Alex, I, I wanna ask very quickly, sorry. Was that under Greer or under Murphy?
Oh, not under Murphy, this was three, four years ago, it might've been Salim.
And I, Dr. Greer was superintendent when it was kind of.
Approved, maybe.
Yeah, well, it wasn't even approved, and that's what I was referring to earlier, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that you were all in that working group.
We, I honestly had to insist and bring colleagues along to insist that we actually review that
and we see what those red line recommendations were so we could approve or disapprove them and, and understand why they're being made, because we didn't like accept it the way they edited it, but we also had.
You basically did.
Well, we also had.
Right, in this race, it's a question.
I'd like to hear Alex's.
Right, yeah, I'm so sorry, I interrupted.
That's frustrating to see that happen.
This is a conversation. So, very, very, what is it, passionate?
Yes.
Yes, layer of rage underneath. But, so, so, I mean, that handbook is currently being used as the guide for the school councils, but it has been watered down.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, just branching out of that, if you look at the, the state, the state set up school councils to feed up into the school committee. And I don't think I've ever seen in the five years that I've been really actively watching, no one has ever asked for a school council input into anything that the school committee has made a decision on.
I mean, I'm not sure anybody would even notice if schools didn't have school councils.
Some don't even know.
I mean, because I, Vassel, well Darby Vassel now, has a school council. Because we didn't have one and we realized that was a problem. And similar to you trying to, you know, get people in, I called people I knew who were on different, you know, friends, people I knew from the playground when our kids were toddlers, speaking to like sort of the secret side society of things, and figured out what they were doing for their elections. And I took some of their documents and we made it work for our upper school, and then we ran an election. And just, just like, you know, three parents who had a little extra time on their hands.
Yeah.
Which I think serves the school, but is not, is not a system.
No.
And is not equitable.
Yeah. And I, I think.
Can I make two more points?
We do need to make sure that Eugenia gets heard.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
And, yeah. Please, after, yeah.
Okay. Okay, yes, okay, so very quickly, one of the things I would love to see changed is to try to use the very basic economic research or any kind of research that shows what unlocks student potential. And we're so lucky, we're here in this home of MIT and Harvard. When I gave the example of how I taught at Fordham Leadership Academy for Business and Technology, it was a fad of putting the word leadership into titles and academic, instead of being like, hopefully that will make the kids learn because they have the word leadership in their school. And similarly, we've got a lot of programs just like that. I'm thinking of Grading for Equity, it's got the word equity there, it must be super equitable. Is there any research that supports that fact that you don't have any deadlines and kids can have unlimited time to take things again and again? If there isn't any outside research, are we putting a lot of resources into measuring those outcomes and making sure that it's working? That, I mean, I would be okay with that. And I think the answer is not really. And one of the issues that we know schools are facing now post-COVID is absenteeism. And there is a lot of great research on absenteeism, and as I understand it, don't quote me, but I believe that it really boils down to you have to be calling the family, you have to be bringing them in. I spoke with somebody in the Office of Equity, or maybe the Office of Family Engagement, and she was really concerned about all of the families who don't come out. She said, she says, we're okay with engaging those who come out to the, the community fairs, which are a lot of fun, but there's all these families who don't even do that, and that was where her concern lay. I just wish that we were following, we weren't reinventing the wheel, we weren't putting the word equity on things, but we're like, hey, people have studied this, we still have a federal government that looks through what works and what doesn't. This is still a website that we can find for now, let's print it all out, because I don't know how long it's gonna last. Let's use those resources, particularly, you know, particularly if we're in Cambridge, we have no excuse not to be going by the research and instead of thinking something up and putting the word equity in and hoping that it's gonna stick.
Right.
Good, yeah. I just wanna turn back to the sort of broader issue of engagement. I mean, look, I think at the top level in terms of structure, Anne Jess talks about this a lot, and it's totally true. I mean, we are, I think the school committee is a bit beholden to formats that, you know, I don't wanna say they stifle engagement, but I don't wanna not say either. I mean, we don't have to be, you know, strictly adhering to robust rules of order. We don't have to limit the topics that somebody can talk about a public comment, which are, you know, maybe First Amendment problems with that. We don't, I mean, that is not a choice that the school committee has to make, it's the way that the school committee is structured, and that can change. Also, I think, you know, there has to be, I mean, we do engagement at that level, you have to wanna engage. You know, if people are gonna show up at a public comment, you're not gonna listen to them. If people are gonna send you emails and you're going to ignore them, like, you know, okay, like, you can change that just by being more involved. But I wanna, I also wanna focus on something Eugenia was touching on, that I think is a real issue here, and let's circle this around with school councils again. You know, if you've served on a school council, you know, especially in a diverse school, like my kid's school, like you know how difficult it can be to actually engage your whole community. So many members of our school community don't really know what the school council does. They don't have time to attend meetings, you know, and they don't, they don't feel invested in the process. And I think it's, it speaks to a bigger problem with family engagement, this is really hard, I don't mean to minimize the difficulty of it. But when you make yourself available, when you hold a public meeting, you're going to get a self-selected group of people that are going to engage with you. And if you wanna do deeper family engagement, you really have to go where people are.
Yeah.
And you have to find ways to bring them into the conversation proactively rather than, you know, holding an open meeting. I mean, some school councils meet during the day, we don't. We meet in the evening so that people can attend, which makes it harder, because then we have shorter meetings, because the educators have already worked eight hours and the last thing they wanna do is work another two. You know, we have, and even then, a lot of people just are not able to show up, are not able to engage. And so I think, yeah, if you wanna do deeper family engagement, school councils are fine. Having, you know, open office hours is great, having a phone number that anybody can call you out is great. Having a phone number that anybody can call you out is great, but you're still gonna get a self-selected population. And to do it right, you really need to go where people are and you really need to be proactive.
I mean, we need some from the district, we we need the district to implement the policy on school councils because it's not being implemented.
And in the spirit of equity, another conversation is being steered that way, I would just like to open the floor to our last two members who, uh, last three members who have not spoke. And then for the sake of time, we do have to move to the next question, we already passed the halfway point, but as all politicians do, you're welcome to answer however you would like, alright? So if you have a lingering thought, there'll be a final moment for you to get in. Let's go one, two, and three.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I have, uh, I really appreciated Arjun's um, uh, message. Um, I think that, yeah, I mean, for this campaign even, I'm going door knocking and I feel like a big part, I think of what the school committee's role and school committee members could be doing is more constituent services, constituent support. I feel like, um, in uh Somerville, for example, I'm working in Somerville Public Schools right now, it's written in our para-professional contract that if a para can speak a different language other than English, they are paid a stipend to be able to do family engagement. I feel like there are a lot of paras in our district who have that ability and we should be looking at them and at us to be able to fill in those gaps to do that outreach and it needs to be sort of uh made possible. Um, I also feel uh to uh Eugenia mentioned absenteeism. Uh, there was some data and anecdotal evidence at FMA that some students were missing school because um their younger siblings were sick, parent had to work, so the kid had to stay home to look after their younger siblings. I feel like that points to why I believe our schools need wraparound supports. Um, I think that working with city council uh to be able to make schools uh neighborhood schools and community schools to be able to address some of those more systemic issues, I think is really key to be able to facilitate family engagement. Um, and finally, uh, I was a- as a CEA member and an educator, I was active in the CEA's solidarity squad that launched last year. It was an initiative to bring together educators and caregivers. I feel like to some extent, it was a self-selecting group. I feel like a lot wor- of work could be done to expand that. Um, but something that was really successful that the solidarity squad organized was a town hall to develop a people's school budget. And I think that having those um places where people can weigh in on what their priorities are instead of sort of making a a top-down decision that doesn't really have any community input except for maybe something symbolic, uh, I think is really key. And then filling that in with the family engagement piece to make sure that we get the input from people who, um, yeah, who 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 won't show up to a meeting like that. And I guess, uh, finally as well, I think back to my point about having um, uh, engaging paras or other members of our community who have like the multilingual capacity to go to families. Um, I, yeah, I have a background as a community organizer, a union organizer. I feel like if I get elected to the school committee, I'm gonna be an organizer first and foremost. Um, and I believe that, uh, as some people mentioned, um, the, yeah, th- there is this like secret, like two-tiered like information system going on in our schools. I can relate to that, having, uh, I did my undergrad at Emmerich College as an immigrant from Florida.
About, about ten seconds.
Yeah, um, that's just to say, like, I know this two-tiered system very well and I feel that like having uh, school navigators to be able to do sort of that casework with families on how to navigate these really opaque and difficult systems, I think is key. And I feel like that's what I would hope to bring in my tenure on the school committee.
Yeah, so back on the school council meeting, I am not in any school council, but I've attended school council meetings as a community member. And also I tried to attend some, but I did not receive any, like, the link, I requested for the link. So it gives me the impression that the district is just putting all these as a formality, not really implementing it with like really wanna engage the community members or even parents. So that's a thing. And back to the school committee, I feel that we have been for many terms relying on superintendents instead of using out the the power that school committee actually has, if we look at the handbook. Um, so I hope through this campaign, regardless who will be elected in the office, we need to really take a good look at what super com- school committee actually is entitled, uh, empowered to do. And um, and also, um, we need to have term limits as well. Yes, we need maybe two to, uh, to expand the limit to four limits to get things done, but having for, having school committee member to be there for so many years, not getting things changed, that's something that we also need to change the perspective and change the the way of doing things.
Uh, great, and and just a segue to to what you you were saying, I mean, the school committees have, I mean, they're created in law by 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 the state, so the state has set up certain things of what we can or cannot do as school committees. And that's been changing. I think school committees used to be a lot more involved in operations, I think because of 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 what we've learned as far as what works. I mean, school committees are really more focused on policy and of of sur- and evaluating the superintendent. And operation is really delegated to the to to the administration, right? So before school committees would approve every single item in 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 every single contract, now we only approve big contracts.
Yeah, but you need to look into what's happening as well, right?
So one thing, the the same way that when our, when we elect people to Congress, new people from Congress come to Harvard and they go to training on how Congress works. When we get elected to a school committee, we're also supposed to do uh training by association of school committees. We also have the opportunity to go to conferences and learn from other school committees across the country of how they're working, what's working, what's also not working. And so I think, I I think there is, there's a dual role. I mean, school committees are there to listen and take input. And 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 there are mechanisms for that, including for example, uh, roundtables. In a, in a roundtable, you can invite people from the public to come and talk to to the committee and provide information. But then when you actually make decisions, the school committee has meetings to make decisions where we take the information that we have to make decisions, right? So it's the same as as Congress. Congress has sessions where they make decisions, they deliberate and make decisions, but there's no public input that in those meetings. And then they have uh, ab- ability to sort of so hold separate sessions where they actually en- engage with the public, right? So there's so one is, three, you got the structures, and then the other one is also talking to all the school committees of what works and doesn't work and and implementing those things. Just to 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 points of innovation.
Thank you. And and I actually think this bridges us to our our, probably our final question, uh, one of our final questions. Uh, earlier, you mentioned that boards are inherently dysfunctional. And and right, and I think what makes the school committee very confusing, unlike the the city council, right, is is, you know, there's the mayor, there's your individual policymaking agenda as a, you know, as a politician, as an elected official. Uh, then there's also this aspect of, you know, of teamwork, right, as of being a part of a, of a larger board. And and so with that quite, with that in mind, I guess my question really is around this dysfunction, right? And this is nothing new. I've heard this for as long as I've been a student at CLS and and CPS, right? And so, you know, how does your philosophy around leadership, your temperament, your emotional intelligence, uh, how will that impact this dysfunction? I think it's very easy for all of us, and I imagine where, let's collaborate, let's ask more questions, let's, you know, let's build coalitions. And I think those are safe answers, but harder, uh, easier said than done. Uh, I personally, right now, I'm having a difficult time moderating a room of just twelve people, right? And so with that said, right, um, I'm curious, you know, and I really wanna get specific here. Um, what are you bringing individually uh to cure and mend this dysfunction? Um, and I I see a hand here, we'll start with you.
So, for me, what I bring is a strategic mind that can see patterns and has had, and I've had practice in speaking with anybody from murderers and uh rape victims uh through my work in documentary and media, to small children directing them for cameras and their parents. And, um, I have joked that I can talk to anybody about something. And the reason why I can talk to anybody about something is that I see people as human. I see them as complex, as complicated, and I think that everybody's story has both value and harm and that we are, that every single one of us is a hero, right? We all have a hero's journey, sometimes we're also the anti-hero. Sometimes, we have a hard time like bridging out of the patterns of trauma that we ourselves have experienced. And those patterns of trauma sort of inhibit the way that we respond.
So so to be clear, to kind of begin to heal the dysfunction, the the body itself needs to see
Each other.
Each other with more empathy or?
No, and it's not, empathy is a squishy word.
Okay.
Equity is also a squishy word. They're not specific enough.
With more humanity.
More directed, what are we doing together, more specific action, focusing on the action, understanding that we all have things that we bring to the table and that we are all worthy of being listened to. That we have to take each other's story into account in order to focus on our commonalities and our differences to move forward.
Gotcha. Thank you. Uh, please.
I would call that humility. Like, I think humility is the big thing that we all need to bring to the table. You know, I I say this as a middle child myself and as a parent of teenagers. And um, sometimes you just need to not win. And that is how things come together. And I mean, for me, I am a middle child, I have lost a lot. But I have, you know, I've kept a lot of um family dinners pleasant and um I have kept teenagers away from screens and been the big bad guy, but for the greater good. And I think that that's, um, humility is the key to it. And I think, um, that's why I focus so much also on processes, because I think when you interject objectivity into what you're doing, when we have a clear way of accessing school committee members, when we have a clear way of evaluating teachers, then we are not making decisions from um a subjective, emotional and potentially controversial standpoint. If we can all agree on the facts that we're using and we can agree that our egos don't come to play here, then we can make difficult decisions with clarity.
I would actually add.
We we have to move on, I'm sorry. Please.
Can I, I just wanna actually pick up on Jess's point about humility. And Jess definitely have he teaches you humility if you didn't have it before. Uh, but I, I do feel that, you know, what I talk often about, and I do certainly draw on, you know, my experience having been a teacher, my experience as a parent. And one of the major takeaways I have from that is understanding that I don't actually understand everything about teaching or about parenting, or that my kids' experiences in CPS are distinct from each other, but also not representative of everybody's, right? And and as a teacher, you know, I know that what I experienced in high school English classrooms or in kindergarten language arts classrooms or, you know, is not what every teacher in every classroom, even on the same grade level in Cambridge is experiencing. So there's some, you know, humility around that. I mean, I think in the, in terms of how I approach this work, you know, I I I I think I'm, you know, pretty even keeled and committed. And and actually, you know, my personal life, you know, that commitment, I think, can show up as some some stubbornness. Uh, that's probably an understatement, uh, in accordance on my family members, but in public life, I hope it shows up as, you know, that steadfast commitment and being ready to learn and evolve. Um, you know, I I, in a previous election cycle, I talked a lot when it was in the theaters about the school committee, I sort of saw it as like the Avengers, you know, it's like, you know, you're assembling this team, you know, and there are different strengths. Different, um, you know, for lack of a better word, weaknesses, right? But when you really come together and you respect what each other brings to the table, you know, I don't think every school committee member should have been a teacher or needs to be a parent, for example. You know, you you actually, you know, get further. And when I've seen our committee function at its strongest, different people are championing different things and developing particular expertise and others are, you know, supporting, being critical partners, you know, pushing it to be a better policy, sometimes overall rejecting and say, yeah, I see where you're going with this and why, but this is not where we really need to be going as, you know, as a community. Um, and I just, just as a last thought, I really wanna thank Louisa for lifting up, um, you know, wraparound supports and collaboration with the city and navigators. I mean, one of the things I'm most passionate about and advocating for, working on and part of this team with the city and school department.
Five seconds, because we're getting away from the question now.
Developing our success planning initiative where every child division would be, has an adult navigator, making sure that supports and opportunities effectively and efficiently, you know, reached. Because that's my biggest frustration.
Thank you.
Not everybody gets what we have.
Please.
Yeah, just to follow on Iron Man's point.
That's not the Avenger I would be, but it's alright.
Okay, okay, Captain America, I mean, it's fun. Uh, yeah, so I uh, I'm in journey. I've taken enough depositions to know that you learn more when you're asking questions, which is a point of deposition, rather than when you're answering them or when you're talking. And that, I think, is the approach that I bring to leadership. And, you know, that's born out of humility, it's also born out of you genuinely being curious. And to David's point, not approaching every situation like you have the answers, just because, you know, you're a smart person who went to fancy schools. Or it's, um, or maybe you're not. Um, I, and I think that that has to guide governance and that has to guide leadership. The other thing that I'd say is taking a sort of adversarial and posture in the job, I don't think serves anyone a, anybody well. I mean, you can come in thinking, you know, we need to make big changes, like, you know, but if you go in fighting, prepared to fight with teachers, prepared to fight with administrators, I think that creates more dysfunction than it resolves. And so I, I view this, when I was a leader in private practice, when I led teams, my leadership style was trusting, having high expectations of the associates I was working with, but also trusting and empowering them to do their best work. And I think they knew that I had confidence in them and I trusted them. And not in every case, but in the overwhelming majority of cases, I think people wanted to do their best work for me.
Thank you.
And I think, so I mean, yeah. Oh, gosh, I was gonna say something else. Oh.
Five seconds.
Yeah, the last thing I was gonna say is, in terms of trying to listen, like, I've tried to keep my answer short until now, apparently. And I wanted, because I wanted to listen, here's some good ideas. And I really wanted to lift up something that Caroline said earlier regarding, I think four-year terms, that or four-year terms for the school committee would be an excellent idea. And I wish I'd said that in response to the last question.
Thank you. Billy?
Um, to add to the leadership qualities that I think, uh, school committee members need to have um, and that I, I think I've been working on, um, um, committing myself to, through my, my teaching career and especially through the work that I've been doing in the past couple of years, um, past three or so years now, I've been part of a network of uh educators for American Democracy and then that folds up to a larger network, um, that is global, uh educators for global democracy. And, um, that and those networks, um, have been really helpful to me in thinking through how to turn my passion, uh, and drive into, um, effective leadership. Um, and listening is is core to what that means, but I also, as a woman especially in this race right now, I'm thinking a lot about, uh, perception. Um, and that's not specific to this moment in time, but it feels actually particularly important in this moment in time to present as a woman, uh, uh, not with rage, uh, because an angry woman is very off-putting. I've heard that. And, um, 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 but when a man is angry, you know, um, uh, it's a strong man, right? Um, and, um, but I think that we're seeing at the federal level, we don't want strong men leaders, right? And so, um, I've been thinking a lot about who I am as a leader and I really have settled on, I I am, I am a kind person, but I'm also firm, I'm direct. I don't like to dance around the issue, I wanna get to the issue. And that gets to, um, my follow-through. I follow through even when I'm doing something that the powers that be don't want me to do. Um, and I will use an example on school council. Over the past two years, I spent a lot of time and energy um, um, lifting up how poorly we were, uh, using our discretionary funds at the school level. Uh, and that's the primary job of the school councils, um, is to, uh, to be, um, reviewing and advising our school leaders how to spend school funds towards improvement goals. And, uh, the first year of my work on this, uh, really fell on deaf ears at all levels of the district. Um, but then the second year, this last year, I finally really made some headway, um, and and bled the charge to start a budget subcommittee at our school uh council, um, which I chair. And through that work, I was finally able to, uh, liaise with and connect with, um, uh educators and parents concerned in the, in our school about how we're spending our money and how we can do better about it. And, um, and we put together some recommendations for our school council, for school le- leadership on how we can, uh, better allocate our funds with a bit, a more participatory budget process.
About ten seconds.
So, I did this against leadership's, uh, uh desires. It was controversial. I was made out to be a, a problem for doing this. But in the end, I managed to stop our school from, uh, paying out a thousand dollar an hour contracts for an outside consultant. And we're now gonna bring that money back to our teachers in our school. And this was really And this was really hard work and it wasn't always popular, but it's what our teachers asked for and I executed.
Okay, thank you. Please, Jose.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'll start by what people have been saying. I mean, the first thing you need to do is listen and ask questions, as Arjun said, that's the most important thing. The other one is you need to do your own research, right? You just need to go back and look at the data and do your own research. And then from an opinion, and if that opinion leads to disagreement with your other colleagues, don't be shy about disagreeing with your colleagues. But at the same time, frame it in such a way that is constructive, that is respectful. Because in the end, we need to move forward, right? So we need to get to a point where we can reach, not that I don't want a consensus, but reach a point where all the voices have heard and hopefully we've come up with a better decision because we've all heard each other, right? Even if we don't agree with the actual, the exact decision that we made in the end. At least if we all gave it our little grain of salt and hopefully built something better.
Responding to that and to Lily, I feel like what I bring aside from being an organizer skills in one-on-one conversations is, yeah, that willingness to be able to bring attention to issues that are overlooked and it might be uncomfortable to talk about. I feel like that's a key skill to have in a job as complex as this. And I feel like I also have a background in qualitative research. So that entails, you know, getting a lot of qualitative data and being able to find the commonalities among them to be able to, like, create policies that really address a lot of different needs. And I also particularly try to seek out perspectives that are not there. I ask the questions of like, who is not in the room? How can we reach them most effectively? And I also appreciate being in this room with you all. I feel like I'm learning a lot. And I feel like I'm going to continue advocating regardless of the outcome. And it's good to be able to, yeah, know that I can connect with you all to be able to advance that advocacy.
Thank you. We are nearing the end.
I'm sorry, Alex.
Please, yeah.
Am I last?
No.
No. Few more voices, few more voices. No, Alex, please.
If you're reluctant, I'll go. No problem. I think I bring leadership experience. As a teacher, I'm a problem solver and a collaborator. When we did the Concerned Black Staff Report, and we're facing the same issues now, it was about looking at a problem and trying to come to a solution. And a solution that was very difficult for teachers and parents and even the school committee and the current superintendent, who was a fantastic person to hear. But that brought a parent liaison to the district, that brought algebra to the district, that brought language to the middle schools, and that's been lost. So I bring not only experience, but I think some kind of thoughtful leadership where I am a collaborator, I'm a scientist at heart. So I'm a research-driven person and a data-driven person, so I believe it. But the other thing I do is I show up. I'm present. I've been in schools, I've talked to teachers, I've talked to parents. And I think my original approach, although having led and organized things internationally, you only do that when you can be a collaborator, coalition builder, and a listener. And so I think that's the work of the school committee. It's a four-vote world, and yet the rules limit how we can talk to each other in terms of public conversations, private conversation, email change, tech change. There's a lot of confines for open meeting law. But I bring to the table a willingness to learn, to listen, but also a solution-driven person who is interested in working with other people who see this as possible, that the problems we face are created by human beings and they can be solved with the proper experience, love, and attention to detail. When we found out that we had to tailor two cities in our district, we brought it to the forefront. And I think we're facing that right now, where privilege has risen and the underserved in the marginalized community has to be recognized. And I think when you focus on the least served and serve them well, you're able to deliver a quality product to everybody. So I'm excited. I don't see us as rivals. When someone lost, there was a young person who lost the election and she said, I'm not going to run against you. No, no, you're not running against me. You're running for the people. I'm running against my record, but I'm not running against everybody here. So it's about collaboration and about a group of people who want to make change for the betterment of all the children in Cambridge Public Schools. So, thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't had a chance to share? Please.
Yeah, I would love to respond to that because I think I shared a similar desire to start with the idea that it is possible and move to there. And I think that the work that I do and that I love to do with young people and with adults is create relationships that do help to further that change. And that's a really important part of being a teacher, but it's also really, a really important part of being a leader and bringing together people, asking questions, being willing to sit with things, to reckon with them, and also the understanding that you are a part of a team. And healthy teaming means strengths and weaknesses, collaboration, creating a sense of psychological safety, all the things that as a school committee we would want to model, both for the district leadership and for building leadership and for young people, are really important to think about at the school committee level because that is where we set policy and it's also where we set culture. And so to be able to do that as a group sets the tone for the district, and that's really important. And I think that being able to be in conversation with everybody here today and thinking about the ways in which we are all coming from a place of love and care and desire for change is really exciting. And I would be so honored to work as a teammate with people in this space so that we can do the things that we know are possible. And I think that is a really great place to be. We're also really lucky to have a teachers' union with new leadership that's ready to join in that collaboration. We'll have a new superintendent coming in. So there is such fertile ground right now to get a lot of that work done. And it would be a real privilege to be leading that work with folks in this room.
Okay, so I'm doing all this as a mother. And when I say this as a mother, I'm not doing it for my own children. They are five, which is lucky. But I'm doing this seeing every child enrolled in CPS as my only child. And I'm doing this with unconditional love. And what you want to do is, as a mother, even if you don't know anything, you are willing to do whatever for your only child. And when I'm referring to only child here, not just the seven thousand over CPS enrolled students, but their families and also the educators and stuff who are supporting all these students. So what it means is, if a child just needs something, as a mother, you will try your best. Not just try, you will go all the way and get it for the child. And if the child just needs someone to listen to, you will listen to the child. And if someone just feels sad but there's nothing can be resolved, give them a hug, give them all your love. And this is what I believe the school committee, serving the public school for Cambridge, should be the way. Including not just listening and asking questions, but go all the way and do what the person, your only child, needs. And also, I have to remind everyone that policy is just mere words if we don't really put that into practice in our day-to-day living, especially the entire district. And I hope that through this campaign, regardless whether I will be in the office or not, and hopefully I will, because I am a good mother with unconditional love. But through this process, I want to share good, the correct educational view, vision that we all should be thinking, a holistic education, not just focusing on a certain part, such as excellent academic. Yes, that's important.
About ten seconds.
But we need a holistic approach, the mental wellbeing, and also whether we are really teaching our kids to thrive beyond K to 12, the lifelong skills that they really need. Thank you.
And lastly, if I'm correct, Eugenia, philosophy, right? How do we begin to heal the quote-unquote dysfunction of this group of people?
Yeah, well, I think it's really hard because there is a lot that's at stake. That's why my approach has been to try and shed light on the fundamental issues. I do that through the newsletter in this case here. And then you just have to, you're counting to four, and you just have to be very hard-nosed about what is the thing we want? If we want, let's say, the thing I said about great teachers being one of these very few fundamental data-backed processes that, that's not the right word, but things that can unlock the economic power of education so that it unlocks economic mobility, I should have said. You have to be hard-nosed about, we're just going to stay focused on that and build the biggest coalition that will work towards that one goal. I did a lot of work on affordable housing. And one of the things that the coalition here in Cambridge worked on was just having the broadest tent possible so long as people could disagree on everything else. It didn't matter. But it's just affordable housing was our top, top priority. So that was the only thing that we've looked at in working with those people. And another part of the work was to shed light on how important affordable housing is in our culture, how much harm it is to every part of society when housing is as expensive as it is. So I think those are the principles that would lead to success there.
Thank you. We have only a few minutes for this next. Sorry, yes, you did see, yes, yes. In the spirit of collaboration.
I'll try to be as brief as possible because I think everyone has been very eloquent and raised different points that I think are important to all of us. I would say that someone said, I think it was you, that empathy is a squishy word.
Eh, it was me.
I don't think it's that squishy. I think that being able to empathize with someone, to see their point of view, you know, the old thing about standing in someone's shoes, is fairly important. And part of that is listening, part of that's humility. You know, things that other people have already spoken about much better than I can. I think that, you know, to take this role, you sort of, not just filter, but draw up on the experiences that you've all had, or that we've all had in terms of working with our community, experiences our family members may have been through, our friends, you know, other parents in the district, where we've seen the struggles that they've gone through. And, you know, drawing all that together and trying to almost give it back to the people you're, if you're elected, you know, you're chosen to represent. In terms of how to be an effective member of the council, there's many different kinds of power. You know, there's the power that's written in the rules, there's powers of persuasion, there's powers of, you know, getting people behind you to, you know, vocally support a policy or a direction that the council, the committee should go in. I think it is a balancing act. It's tricky. But as several people have said, you only need four people on the committee to change direction. I think that's something to keep in mind when choosing who is going to represent you. Talking to the electorate out there.
Well, now we have a very short time for a final question. You can almost consider this a lightning round if you choose to answer at all. On her way to a full-time job at WBUR, a reporter for Cambridge Day a while back, a freelancer, encountered what she said was Massachusetts Association for School Committees guidance that school committee should speak with one voice. And whether this is apocryphal or actually out there somewhere spoken in some way.
It's written down.
I have found that the school committee, over the years, over several terms, has tended to not speak with the media in the same way the city council does. City council, there's a perception that, well, we're all elected officials and we answer questions when we're asked, when we're asked it. And that's not how it feels at the school committee. I want to just take a couple of minutes just to dig into this. Does this feel appropriate to people? Is this something that has actually seemed to work? Would anyone want to push back?
Just before we begin, I just have to say, for the sake of time, and again, as an athlete, as a coach, I hate the referees, all right? So I understand, all right? But I will just try to limit you, and if I see the question kind of going off track, I'll try to give you a ten-second warning. But please, begin.
I think this is a really problematic rule. It's, that's just guidance from the Massachusetts Association for School Councils, which.
As I understand it.
Yes, which is, that's how I understand it as well. That's just one recommendation. The reason why I think it's been so problematic is because it has acted as a sort of muzzle on our school committee members. I don't know what our individual school committee members really think about key issues right now. And that makes it really hard to vote for current school committee members if I don't know what you're thinking. But furthermore, major, major decisions have been made in this district without explanation. And it was a matter of one or two current school committee members going rogue in order to explain why they voted to end Dr. Greer's time as our superintendent. And I think that has created serious distrust and problems in our district that we need to address. And I think that means taking the muzzle off and allowing individual members to speak their mind.
Alex.
It stifles debate, that particular rule. I'm so sorry. I just think that that rule means that we can't see the workings. We want to know the workings. We want to know the process. And I think the thing that feels the most frustrating to me about the way, the actual way that the school committee runs, is that there is no conversation in which a school committee member can directly respond to a public commenter. That seems problematic. That feels like stifling free and open debate, free speech. I would like to change that.
Thank you.
Alex.
Well, I've been on the other side as a reporter for Cambridge Day. And one of the things about the district, and it does depend a little bit on who is the superintendent and who they choose as their chief communications officer, it is extremely difficult to get information out of the district as a whole. If you do a Freedom of Information Act, they will stretch the maximum amount of time to respond to you. Right now I have a request in. The standard is ten days. They have stretched it out to twenty-five days the day after the superintendent is selected. And I don't know why. I've never had anything stretched out that far before. I think that the website is disappointing. You can't find a policy order. You can't track, you know, an expenditure. You can't track how much money have we spent on X piece of software or Y service. And I think that really makes it extremely difficult to find enough information to even know what questions to ask.
The goal here is not to put any incumbent on the spot. I just do want to give an opportunity for incumbents to apply.
I'm happy to reply quickly from my side. So as I mentioned, you should not be afraid of disagreeing and making your disagreement public. And hopefully that, if all of us bring our different points of view before we make a decision, hopefully that will lead us to a better decision. But once the decision is made, even if you disagree with that decision, it's the decision of the body. And so you need to respect that decision. So that the spirit of that comment is that, once you make a decision as a body, you need to fall behind it and support the district to implement that decision, right? Because we're not there to be just serving our own interests. It's the interest of the whole, and if the whole made a decision, then you need to follow through. At some point, you can maybe revisit the decision later on, right? But I just wanted to highlight that.
I know, I'd like to build maybe, or maybe a slightly different direction. From what Jose was saying, which is that, you know, when we make a decision, you know, we are trying to make the best of that decision. And, you know, that also means continuing to be, you know, critical and looking at it carefully. And, you know, others have said, I think it's been an issue in Cambridge where, you know, whether it's policies, programs, et cetera, sometimes because we haven't had budget pressure to do so, we've neglected to assess, is this actually doing the best towards our goals? Because what we don't have unlimited is time. You know, this session about our kids, right? They've only got one crack at it. So it's like, even if we could afford to do ten more things, we don't, the kids can't afford to spend time on things. And we, as educators and administration, can't spend times on things that aren't working. I think I'm, you know, very honest about where I believe in our meetings and in those debates, in those conversations, in my conversations with individual or group members of the public. Trying to do that in a framework of respect, which I truly have for everybody serving on the committee and everybody who's engaging and even those who aren't able to engage. So I hope that doesn't come across as somehow, you know, not really having an opinion or being able to express it. You know, really try to be both honest and respectful and clear. And, you know, on my website, it's in conversation. But, you know, I think if people interpret that, you know, kind of guidance as saying like, well, as committee members, you have to just like come to some sort of group think and then, you know, parrot that. Like, I think that's misguided. That's not how I see it.
Also, I think when people talk about the decorum and the debate, you have to look at the structure of the meeting. The legal structure for the meeting is six to eight. We extend to ten. This is a school committee that had a six-hour summer meeting. And so it is, I think, when people think about the fact that this is an operational situation where your decisions affect the day-to-day work for the school district, there is a pressure of time that I don't think people appreciate till they get on to the school committee. I'm as frustrated by the website as you are. We're undergoing a website change, but that's not the operational work. I'm as frustrated by the website as you are. We're undergoing a website change, but that's not the operational work of the school committee. And I think, um, in the past administration, we were all disappointed with the public relations aspect and the communications, and I think we have, we're doing a better job, a summary of the school committee meetings. But I think when people get on, get on-boarded, they begin to see all the limits that the law provides for the protection of the community, not for the school committee, that kind of restricts that. I can speak freely. We're not supposed to talk about things. We're gonna deliberate in the public spirit. Three more of us in conversation about a policy, more than three of us in a, in a casual conversation about policy online, on cellphone, is against the law.
Much of my frustration, we need to cut this off.
For state, this does it. I didn't do it. Thank you.
We are at the five-minute, uh, warning mark, so, uh, again, just to, to get everyone in, please.
I just wanted to say that I think that this comes from, um, this sort of brings up the idea of the difference between the spirit and the letter of the law. Like, the spirit of it makes sense to me. If the committee votes on something, even if you weren't on the winning side of it, you get behind it. We work together as a team. I don't think that necessarily means that we as a community don't get to see the messy debate and democracy of it all in that decision-making process. I don't think that means when the decision is made, it's not explained to the public. I think that we can still have the spirit of collaboration and moving forward, but, um, not be as, like, literal about how we all get in line and follow each other's lead.
Then we have to give Eugenia the last brief final word. I'm sorry.
Okay, very, so, um, I do think it's important to remember what is at stake. It is truly the futures of seven thousand children. Some of them are from well-to-do families. Some of them need public education to break that po, po, cycle of poverty and be able to succeed. All of them need to succeed in this economy. So that's what's at stake, and I think that's the way we should think through whether or not to talk to the public about subjects. And Jose Luis, I just remember one thing that you said, uh, two years ago, was that you had voted against a former superintendent, but now you felt that your job was to support her because, uh, you were the, the lone voice against her. And I do think, see things a little bit differently, which is, she was in the process of messing up again and again and hiring principals. This is objective. She, two of, half of the principal processes failed and had to be started over again, and I felt that it's not about, the job isn't supporting her. The job isn't supporting anyone. The job is making sure seven thousand kids can succeed after they graduate. So I do think that's the best way to understand it. Talking to the public is one tool, collaborating and, and, and compromising with your col, your colleagues is another. All of the tools have to be put in, in service of making sure seven thousand kids succeed.
And I just, but that's, because she had for something, so I, I would say, I supported her, but it doesn't, but I also held her accountable. So supporting her and doing her job is different from holding her accountable. So there's nothing to that. I can recommend that.
Of course, thank you. And again, out of fairness, we, we are pressed for time, about three minutes left in our form, um, but there are four voices who haven't spoken. So, uh, lightning round, I do up on the floor if you like to make a final comment on this question.
Yeah, I think that working as a team and having different ideas are, those are not mutually exclusive, and I also think it's really important that we, as a body, question laws that come down that are intended to silence. I think that is our responsibility as citizens. And so as a school committee, if there are policies in place at the state or federal level, that's also incumbent upon us to think about what we need to do to, um, to shift that. And I also think it's important to model for young people, showing our thinking. We're asking them to do that. We should be asking them to do that. And that's a really important part of what it means to be on a school committee, um, as well.
I just think the open meeting law is designed to facilitate transparency, not limit transparency. And so if that is the functional effect, we need to find ways to work around it, and maybe that is being able to go to the press and say, this is what I thought. I disagreed with this vote. I voted against it. Is, here's why. Now I'm gonna work to implement this policy. And I feel like that has to be okay. In public ed, there are no easy answers. We've been, if we could have solved achievement gaps by waving a magic wand, we would've done it fifty years ago. It has to be okay to disagree. It has to be okay to disagree with your colleagues and to talk to the public about why.
Yeah.
Um, to, if we know, if we see that there's a policy, even a law made by someone up there, not, not making sense, and as, in this case, we should be putting the kids first. We should actually advocate, voice it out, communicate, communication, transparency, make it transparent and communicate.
Um, and I'll end by saying, um, I believe in like dialectical iterative thinking. I feel like if someone is presented with a polished response without seeing what it took to get there.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I feel like that's a very critical part of the process and of policymaking and of honestly engagement, family engagement. So I think that, uh, yeah, I, I, I believe it's important to have more transparency, like others have said.
Well, with that final word, on behalf of the Cambridge Day and behalf of all the staff at CCTV, uh, we wanna thank you for your time, your thoughtfulness, your candor. Um, and again, I think ultimately modeling the very conversations that need to be had. Um, and again, we thank you, uh, for taking the time out of your day to be here. Uh, with that said, we will wrap our form, um, and we look forward to seeing the rest of the campaign unfold. Thank you.
Thank you.